We called the women of Prescott today. She celebrated with the Southridge movement. So that was very exciting to a little bit more about her women earned the right to vote. And there was the announcement. We should be. So one of the heroes, I'm going to go with you just saying. I also like to bring up on Sunday morning, you.
Ranch and the airport is absolutely fantastic. So when you drive by, there's a story behind it. It's Bill Napperker's artwork. And then the bronze smith, the Riley, Ed Riley and Kathy Riley are the ones that actually did the bronze smith work. And then Ron James, the family trust, they purchased that and gave the money to the Prescott art area art trust with Kevin Pitts. They made it all happen. This is how we get things done in the city of Prescott, public, private partnerships. And what a magnificent piece. So when you look at it, there's the hunter and he's crouched down and he's got his binoculars and he's looking for his game, just looking out there. And then underneath the ledge, there's a really nice buck and the horse is looking over the ledge and sees the buck. And so the humor is if horses could talk, he could tell his partner where he needs to go find that buck. It's right under his nose. So it's, it's a wonderful piece. If you have the time to, of course, you know, as you may be going around the roundabout a couple of times to take a look at it, but we're very grateful to the James family for bringing that piece to Prescott. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Do we have Pastor Hep with us, Sarah?
I don't see him. I think he might've left due to our late start.
All right. All right. Well, we will skip an invocation. Let's stand for the pledge, which is going to be led by Mayor Protem.
Okay. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's please call roll.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Here.
Mayor Protem Orne.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
And Councilman Siska.
Here.
All are present.
All right, thank you for that. Let's move on to consent agenda. Is there any items that any member would like to pull from the consent agenda?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Rusing?
Uh, the one about the school resource officer, I just had a question as to how much is our funding for the, I couldn't find it in the packet.
Okay, we can pull that item and discuss in just a minute. Anything else that you would like to pull? Anybody? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items six A through six D excluding six C.
Second. We have a motion and second. Let's all please vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right, item six C regarding SRO, Chief Black.
Sarah, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is a request for approval to enter into an IGA with Prescott Unified School District, allowing the police department to assign an officer in the position of school resource officer at Prescott High School. The district agrees to pay 75% of the officer's salary, which is approximately $66,000 annually. Those masks are tough. And then the remaining 25% is in the city's general fund, which is 25% of the officer's salary. And that is budgeted within the police department for the school year 2020 to 2021. And because of the undetermined date of opening for the high school campus for in-person learning, a clause is added to the IGA, which allows for suspension of terms of the agreement for the time in-person instruction is delayed. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. That was one of my other questions was how, how the program was going to be affected by the virtual classroom situation. But no, thank you. I think this is a wonderful program and I'm so glad that the city supports the school resource officer program. But I just was curious as to how much our investment is in its money while spent. Thank you.
Thank you. And the, and the item is for the approval of the IGA. The budget was part of the, the budget approval process. And we just have a wonderful partnership with the, the school district and Prescott High School. And we really appreciate their continued support and that isn't always the case around the country these days. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve consent item six C.
Second.
Second. Motion and second. Please vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right, let's move on to consent ordinance, please.
Adoption of ordinance number two zero two zero dash one seven one nine of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the acceptance of a water line easement from Third Gen Enterprises LLC and authorizing the abandonment of the easement recorded in reception number two zero one nine dash zero zero four seven one two three of the office of the Yavapai County Recorder, Yavapai County, Arizona, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptance and abandonment. And adoption of ordinance number two zero two zero dash one seven two five of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the abandonment of portions of a certain easement recorded in the book one seven two zero pages two seven six and portions of that certain easement recorded in book three five five one page one four seven in the office of the Yavapai County Recorder, Yavapai County, Arizona, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said abandonment of easements.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt consent ordinance items seven A and seven B.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, let's please vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right, let's move on to item eight A, please.
Approval for the release of annual merit adjustments in the fiscal year 21 budget.
Before proceeding with this decision, I think Mark was going to go over some tax revenue information. Is that correct, Mark?
Yes, I have some new tax revenue information, just a couple reminders from budget process. If we have a few minutes.
That'd be great.
I'll go through them. We do have the June numbers came in this yesterday and I got everybody, I emailed everybody the schedules, but I wanted to go through them publicly as well as another schedule I just put together today after a discussion with Councilman Good to answer a question that we were talking about. Again, just quick composition, the, the schedules that we've been using are based on NAICS codes, which are classification of a business. So we're going to look at two different types of schedules today. Under the, the NAICS code, the Northern Arizona or North American Industrial Classification System, you classify your business. So a Costco would be classified as a retailer, a big retailer, as opposed to individual sales activities that happen at a Costco, like a restaurant through the snack bar or like motor vehicle repairs to the tire center or pharmacy through the pharmacy. So there's a little different grouping between the two things we're looking at. What we've generally been doing here, as you can see, June, it was, was a good month across the board, except for, of course, restaurants, hotels and our rentals continue to suffer for obvious reasons. But again, hotels are down 21% from last June, which is not good, but it's a lot better than the 77% that was down in April. And as well as restaurants were down 13% compared to, again, 51% that they were. Of course, we still see really strong growth in our big areas like the general merchandise and, and then even growth in some of the smaller areas like home improvement, which of course I separated out just to, just to show the, the shifting of funds, if you will, from in people's spending habits. Looking at June overall, up 11% compared to last June, bringing our year almost up 8% overall. Again, a little shocking when we went through the budget, you know, there was a lot of uncertainty. We didn't know what we were doing as far as revenues and how they're going to respond. We've only had one month that was down and that was April is down 2%. So surprising information. Talking this morning with Councilman Good about the way fair decision that happened over the last few years and getting internet sales reporting to cities, which has been great, long overdue. I'm glad it finally got here, especially as we look at this where a lot of sales have moved to online. And looking at the classifications now, this differs from the, if you will, the NAICS reporting because this is based on the classification. So in this case, a Walmart, Costco would be reporting sales under retail sales for the stuff they sell, but they would report under a restaurant for their snack bar. And they, so a business can report under several categories. So you get a truer sense of the actual impact here. And again, big number, wanted to bring it up, the year as a whole, last fiscal year as a whole, there was $1.8 billion of taxable activity in the city of Prescott, which is up almost again, 8% from our 1.7 billion last year. Now, this is taxable activity, obviously not taxed collected. Separated on this, I was able to pull out online retailers relating to that so we could see what that means. Now that they're reporting, again, it's 35 million, which is a great number, better than not getting any money on that, like we did for a lot of years. It's about 1.9% of the overall taxes that we receive comes from the online retailers. Again, it's not a huge percentage. It's more than hotels, especially in this last year. It's about what hotels usually are around 2%. But again, most of our sales, as you can see, are retail, 68%. And those are those big retailers we have. Another interesting note, I noted while pulling this report together between the meetings today, we have about 1,300 people reporting online sales. So it's not just Wayfair, it's not just Amazon, it's all the little ones. You know, some of them only report a couple bucks for whatever they sell on their Etsy account, but it's all coming, all coming to the city as it should. With that, I wanted to just look at the overall budget last year and talk about the merit increase that we're considering today. This is the budget summary with a little more separation. I pulled out that contingency for the use of the surplus fund balance as a result of the Arizona cares. We've talked about the contingencies in this budget. Now, the merit increase that we're talking about today was not part of those contingencies. We actually did include it in the general operating budget. So it was included in the budget. It was fully funded with operating revenues even at our lower projections. So it's not a contingency, it was in there. It was just held so we could see how revenues were coming in to see if they were worse than we had projected. So again, this is the fund balance that we're looking at on this screen for the different funds and some combinations. As you can see, the operating surplus was positive by almost a million dollars in the general fund alone. That included the merit increases. That included the lower revenue projections that we put in there because we didn't know what was happening. Again, we have a higher than usual fund balance because of that AZ cares funding that we got at the last quarter of the year. And that is of course budgeted for your consideration on your next item. With that, since I'm losing my voice, I think I'll stop there unless you have any other questions.
Michael, anything else to add on this topic?
No, I, you know, we made, I think, what was a wise decision a few months back to hold on these merit increases because we really didn't know what the economic impact was going to be here locally of COVID. I mean, we're not out of the woods on COVID, but I think it's safe to say the trends you're seeing are a lot more positive than I think Mark or I could have imagined. I'm going to put words in your mouth, but I know that I felt like this was going to be a heck of a lot worse over this period of time than it has been. And that actually talks to the strength of our sales tax economy here that we're still a destination. We're, we have a socio-economic demographic that has some disposable income and is still spending it. And those are positives for a community that's trying to come out of this. So.
Yeah, a lot of consumer confidence here. You know, when you look at construction and you know that there's a lot of home improvement going on, you see people buying RVs like crazy, cars pop back up as well. It's pretty incredible to see the kind of confidence people had in the middle of the pandemic with what they were buying.
Definitely. And I think this one report showing the activity, 1.8 billion of taxable in the city, a huge number. Prescott has been a retail center for Yavapai County for years. We still are. Obviously, there's more competition with the Quad City area. But if you look overall at taxable activity, even in the Quad City area, two thirds of it is happening in Prescott, which is a lot more than our percentage of the population.
One more point, you know, when you look at fiscal year 20, you've had a COVID impact for at least three, probably four months. So you could say a third of that year has been impacted by COVID. And the end of the day, we're still 100 million, 100 and what, 20 some odd million more than we were last year in terms of.
It was an extremely solid year before COVID. We had some great revenue growth.
Glad you were wrong on your prediction.
I am too. Nobody's happier than me, Mayor.
Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you. I don't know if you can answer this or HR, but you know, we, several months ago, we approved the, a consultant consultancy agency to come up and look at job descriptions and salary It sounds like that's been suspended or delayed and do you, do you know anything more about that?
Um, council, yeah, Councilwoman Rusing, the, that study is still underway. We're expecting results in the next few months. So we'll be bringing that back to council when we get it. It'll be later this fall. It'll be presented and we can consider it as we put together next year's budget on how council wants to implement that, if council wants to implement that or how to proceed with that.
And then also we have some, another couple of quarters coming up, including the holidays. And as you know, a lot of small businesses live and die by having, whether or not they have a good year over the holidays. So it might be safe to say that these first two quarters could be just a snapshot of the whole of four quarters and there might be some sort of a lag between Prescott and what's going on with the rest of the state.
You know, definitely, anything's possible. How things will proceed as we go through is anybody's guess. How strong will COVID come back in the fall? What kind of shutdowns will there be? All those things are hard to say. The, there, and there's two issues here that we got to keep in mind. We have our overall economy as a whole and our tax base, which is, is pretty strong as we've been discussing. And we have small businesses and the devastation if we lose a large percentage of our, of our small businesses. Small businesses are important to the city. They offer employment, they offer opportunities for entrepreneurs and things like that. They don't contribute a huge percentage to our overall tax base, but that doesn't mean they're unimportant. If we look at our overall tax collections, the top 10 taxpayers in the city, which are listed in my comprehensive annual financial report, bring in about 40% of our income, just the top 10. And if you pull that down to the top 100, you're up in the 90s, 90% of our income. Now, when you consider we have 8,000 taxpayers in the city, you know, the, the small businesses are there, but they're generally not in the top 100. They're important, like I say, to the community as a whole, for employment, for opportunities and all that. But as far as our revenues, a lot of that comes from the, the big retail people in town.
Councilman Blair?
I just want to say I'm glad the numbers were wrong. That's all I can say. It's pretty bright day when you can look up there and say, you know, we made a mistake. You guys did the right thing thinking it might be worse than it was. And I've always been one to believe that we shouldn't hold our employees' pay because through all this COVID-19 stuff, they've been out there in their patrol cars, out there in their fire trucks, out there in their sewer wagons, out there in the trash trucks, doing everything that staff here does. I'm glad to see Mr. City Manager, that this is on our scheduled to vote. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. I monitor economic activity pretty closely. I read the Wall Street Journal every day. I take a series of advisory newsletters that I have for many, many years, subscribe to the Forbes Magazine and other publications, in addition to managing my own portfolio. So even though these numbers are encouraging, to speculate that we've dodged the bullet, so to speak here, I think is a little bit, in fact, I think it's dramatically premature. I'll read you a couple of quotes here. Current estimates show that corporate profits will be down 34% from a year earlier, marking the sharpest decline since the financial crisis struck in the fourth quarter of 2008. Analysts don't expect earnings to grow again until the first quarter of next year and they forecast it won't return until 2022, where profits might be meaningful above, above the 2019 levels. In my fixed income advisor, real GDP fell at a minus 33% annual rate. And this was the significant, and this is, we're talking about the second quarter that just completed, was significantly worse than the first quarter decline of minus 5%. And the recent collapse in economic activity has resulted in some of the worst economic figures ever recorded. We now have, know that there are more nationwide major retailers have filed for bankruptcy in the first six months of this year than all of 2019, including some very major ones that affect us locally, JCPenney's, Pier 1 Imports, General Nutrition Centers, World Market is being liquidated. And we're starting to see some of the impacts of not only our local small businesses, which we are very aware of, regardless of how much they contribute to our revenue base, those businesses are extremely important for the people who started them, who try to keep them going and sending a message that we're going to be providing raises to the government employees of Prescott when they're desperately trying to hold on to their existence. I've got a list of 25 different businesses in our general area that have permanently closed. And we're seeing a number of our banking, brick and mortar banking branches that are closed or permanently closed. And I think that's more of a reflection of the overall economic environment nationally. But that still means those people that work there, tellers and, and other people are now out of business, out of work. Their unemployment benefits are expiring and still subject to a lot of national debate. So I think it's important that we continue to keep our belts tightened as we experience the kind of, I won't call it a second wave of coronavirus, but it's probably a second wave of economic impact that we're still going to have to deal with over the course of the next year. So even though I would certainly support and want to send a signal to our staff and our public safety officers, how much we value them, I don't want to send the message to our small business community that we're giving raises out when they're desperately trying to just survive. So I would not be in support of this.
Councilman Siska?
Thank you. Well, I appreciate Councilman Good's comments. You know, I think that we need to take a look at everything in order to consider this. But I'm going to kind of give you the opposite side of that. In our business, we're doing more business today than we have done in probably eight We are making more money today than we were, have made yearly over the last eight years. I talked to people like Waters Garden Center, his sales are up 50%. I think that the consumer is driving this. The consumer understands that this is a false and artificial recession brought on by COVID. And I just have the feeling, you know, you can get all the figures in the world, but ultimately, small business in particular goes by gut. And my gut says, we're in for a hell of a ride. And I think that, you know, to, to look at the figures that we've got right now, looking at how we've been challenged over the last few months, the figures are incredible. Talk about resilience. It's just absolutely amazing and we're finding out what we're made of. So while I appreciate Councilman Good's comments, I look at things totally differently. From my gut tells me that we're headed for some really, really good times. And when these small businesses come back, which they will, and if they don't come back, some other one will come back in their place. When they come back, like I said, we're going to have an incredible ride. So I would support this release.
Councilmember Rusing?
I just want to thank our staff and for all their hard work. You put in many hours. You're not just nine to five. You put in many weekends and the city is very appreciative. The public's very appreciative of that. But I would prefer to wait for the results of the, of the study. And also I think we need to wait for a couple of more quarters to come in, at least towards the end of the year. And, and I just feel that now is not the right time. Thank you.
Other questions, comments from the council?
Makes me feel warm and fuzzy when we say we really appreciate you, but to hell with you. That really makes me feel good. And Siska, I like what you said. The downturn of the economy has always affected Prescott less because we live off our own. When you drive around this town and you look at every RV shop, every car shop, every place out there, they have no inventory. No inventory on houses. People are spending money. They've lived this, they know how to respond to it now and they're going on with their lives. And I agree with you. Get on the bus because we're going for a hell of a ride.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilman Blair and Councilman Siska. I, I do think, I'm very pleased to see these numbers and it's really encouraging. And I think one of the things we see is, it's like Steve said, Siska, is that the consumer's driving a lot of this. And I know I am out shopping as much as I can locally, doing as much as I can. And I think a lot in our, our community is supporting this community. And I think this is what we're seeing as the results of it. Costco, I mean, people out there, I don't know, I just think, I get a feeling that things are really good. I do understand those, some of those large retails like Penny's and, but you know, we were going to have some of that anyway, I believe, just because of, of the online market. But I'm, I'm with you, Steve. I think the economy here is looking pretty good and I think a lot of it we owe to our community that is supporting our retail community.
Councilwoman Scholl?
Thank you, Mayor. I think one thing for me beyond just the positive numbers we're seeing is this was already budgeted. We have other contingencies built into our budget so that if things do slow down, if, if numbers do decrease, we have that buffer. But you know, Blair is right, these people have been working throughout the pandemic and working hard. And there's this perception sometimes that people who work for government are lazy or don't, don't work hard or are just doing it for the quote unquote cushy benefits. But that's so untrue from everything I've seen throughout my entire life. And to sit here and say, we appreciate you, thank you for all your hard work, but we're not going to do this, I think is a little disingenuous. And, and for me, because it's already budgeted and we have other contingencies built in, I think it's kind of a no brainer.
Just one, one more thing.
Yes, sir.
I just have to. A lot of times when you give somebody a raise and they're your employees, you know, you say, what have you done to deserve a raise? And every day I look around at our city employees in the middle of the night fixing a water line that.
line that blew up. They're there. That fireman's there, that policeman's there. They do a lot for the money that they make. And I'm going to show it by my vote today.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, Mark, I wonder if you could share with the public the amount of money that we have set aside and reserve. I think we're way above the standard.
So this is, again, the fund balance sheet that we looked at during the budget process. Again, we're starting the year, and these are budgeted fund balances, which means they're waiting for actuals, which means the 26 million that's beginning didn't really anticipate sales tax ending at 8% last year. So I guess that's my way of saying 20, the 26 million on the top of the page for general fund is probably a little low. That is, again, 60-some percent of our, our, of our general fund operating revenues. We get to where we're ending with all the contingencies being spent, including the large transfers to the airport for the, the terminal with the surplus that's in that fund balance being used for the AZ cares, that came from AZ cares for the projects you're going to talk about in the next agenda item. We are still ending the year with $13 million as unassigned fund balance, which is well above the 7.7 we need for our 20%. It's really closer to 35%, which is a, which is a healthy thing, and that's after all these expenses. It's not, not before.
35%. So, I mean, that's, that's very healthy. And, and actually, I think would be not a very good use of taxpayer money to just continue to sit on that.
Industry standard is what for?
Industry standard falls at a low about 20, about where we are, to 230. So, I mean, you know, you, you know, it needs to be what it needs to be depending on, on the, the thing. Again, when, when I started with the city, of course, that's when money was worth a lot more. We had a, yeah, we, we had, I believe, 5% in our reserve, which is not sufficient, so.
And I believe it's good to have a rainy day fund, but it's, it's raining out there right now. And I, I certainly will support this effort.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
All right.
I've, I've, there, there might be public comment, but I will, I will hold that thought.
Get back.
Hold that thought.
Please allow him to make his motion when he's ready.
We, I will, I will. Trust me. Trust me, I will. We do want to open it up for public comment. I would like to say, I do read the Wall Street Journal and some other different national publications, but I agree with Councilman Siskas in this situation and others at this dais that I'm very bullish on Prescott. I see what's happening on our downtown and, and other areas around the city. With COVID, people are attracted to rural areas. They want to be in these kinds of places. They feel safer and, and they, they sense that, that it's a safer place to be with the virus happening. So I think that is a factor that we haven't talked about yet that is very important to consider here is that people are going to keep coming to Prescott. They want to be in these rural areas where they feel safer. I want to say to our employees, I appreciate you all, and I want to say that I'm happy to give you a raise to back that up as well, like Councilman Blair said. So I'm very honored to work with all of our city employees. You guys do a tremendous job and, and make me proud every day. So thank you for what you do, and I'm so happy to do this raise. Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
Councilman Blair?
Oh, I would be glad to. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the release of annual merit adjustments in the FY '21 budget year.
Second.
We have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes 5-2.
All right. Let's move on to item 8B, please.
Utilization of the $5,85,816 in unrestricted local fiscal year '21 revenue made available by CARES Act reimbursements for $5,85,816 in public safety in and for quarter four of fiscal year '20.
Mayor and council, if you would give me a few minutes, I'd like to discuss what I'm calling an update on the projects we discussed at the last meeting, some points of clarification. I think one point of clarification, I, I do understand that the council understands this, but for the public, is what this money really is. And I apologize if during my presentation the last time it wasn't as clear as it needed to be. This is City of Prescott general fund money. And let me kind of walk you through, I asked Tyler to sort of flow chart how we got where we are. The president signed the CARES Act. He distributed a certain amount of money through the treasury to the state of Arizona. The state of Arizona decided, Governor Ducey specifically, to give the City of Prescott some money for public safety reimbursement for COVID-related expenses for the last quarter of last fiscal year. So basically, what happened is we had already budgeted that, just like we budgeted these raises. We were able to offset what we budgeted for the last quarter with $5,85,000 that now is in the general fund to be used completely at the council's discretion. And Tyler, do you mind hitting the guidelines? I think the key to this whole discussion is the Arizona CARES guidance. It's question number 10, and what, if I want to use these funds to support small businesses, not-for-profits, arts, or other types of activities? And I'm reading this for people at home that don't have the ability to see this really great on their screen. "The purpose of the Arizona CARES Fund is to provide local jurisdictions as much financial flexibility with possible while not duplicating other federal funding streams. Once the jurisdiction has reimbursed the previously incurred public health and public safety costs, they are free to deploy the local resources to any purpose decided upon by that jurisdiction." That actually comes out of the guidance provided from the governor's office. Is that correct, Tyler? I don't think it gets any clearer than that. Moving on to the next point. Unrestricted fund balance, Mark, and you guys just went and did a really good job on this, so I'm not going to belabor the point very long. You have an unassigned fund balance that is 34% of the operating revenue. If you were to decide hypothetically to sock this away for Hurricane Day and put another $5 million on that, that'd be $18 million. That'd be a 47% unrestricted fund balance. At that point, I think you would be accused of hoarding taxpayer money because you would be sitting not just on a nest egg, you'd be sitting on an entire nest. Small business grants. In no way, shape, or form, and I don't want to belabor this point because we talked about this at the last meeting, what the small business community has gone through has been unprecedented, and it's horrible. We have, as of last fall, about 7,000 small businesses that had occupation, or business licenses last fall. Again, if you just arbitrarily decided that half of them were impacted by COVID, and I guarantee it's more, you'd be at $1,500 a business. In order to do something like that, to manage 3,500 grants, good luck, I would probably need an entire team of people, which would eat up administrative costs into the tire amount of money, which is already negligible to begin with. On top of that, and I'll let John talk as much about this as he would like, there's a problem with this, that jurisdictions that got the money through AZ cares are seeing that it's potentially problematic in terms of the gift clause.
So, Mayor, because, because this is, this money, this $5 million is not AZ cares money, again, reiterate, it's general, it's city general fund money. The city creating some sort of grant program could, could be seen as a gift. And Arizona Constitution, in, in short form prohibits government from giving gifts to, to private industry unless there, so a gift meaning no, no consideration, nothing received in return. So when we're looking at something like this, it, it, there are some templates out there. They're very complicated in, in terms of some cities are trying to do this, but there's a risk involved, I think, being a gift clause, a potential gift clause violation. And as we talked about before, there are a number of different ways to challenge it, one being this 1487-type challenge, which we don't want to get involved in, at least directly. So my recommendation would be that the, the grant, a grant-type program, given the, if you look at those numbers, given the sort of limited or benefit that you might see, and then given the risks involved because of the legal issues and the complexities, not, and again, Michael was talking about needing a staff to manage a grant program. There'd be a lot of legal analysis that'd have to be done as well before he could even come up with a program that was maybe defensible. So our recommendation from legal perspective would be that a grant or grant program is just, it's just a, a risk, a minefield of, of risk. So I would recommend against it from a legal perspective.
Thank you, John. So the next thing I want to talk a little bit more about, and I'm going to turn this over a little bit to John Haas and Jim Robb, is the Center for the Future, and what has gone on even in the two weeks since the last time we got together?
So we've been busy. And what we've done is we're looking at the possibility of having temporary-
John, make sure you use the mic so people out there can, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, uh, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. We've been busy speaking with Prescott tenants and, and prospective tenants, and we've been working at having a plan for a temporary space prior to the time when we could have a building in place. And so what we did is we took a look at Catalyst, which is a space company, the number of employees that they would have initially and through 2021, and then in 2022, what they estimate they would grow to. And so although initially it's only 27 employees, it grows to 83 employees in just about 18 to 24 months. And then we are also lucky because for some reason, people are finding us, even though we haven't started marketing yet. And so we have a little company called Seventeen. We met last week with the Arizona Commerce Authority. They'd like to partner with us, the Arizona Tech Council, and a company called ViOpta. So these are prospects who've not gone as far, but they have 20 employees now, they would grow 10, I believe, I can read that, growing to 25, so about doubles. And so we see right away, just over these two years, a growth of 40 high-paying jobs is already comparable in payroll to the online revenue that you just talked about, 35 million. It'd be about $40 million in, in revenue when you include some indirect jobs as well. So I wanted to do that.
Yeah, and I'll talk a little bit more about what I'm looking for in terms of finding these folks space now, because in my mind, if a company wants to put roots down in Prescott in a year and a half after the construction of a building, let's get them here now, and I'll talk a little bit more about that.
Okay.
And John, did you want to talk about the other two slums you had?
So, um, let's see, how do you click? Oh, there we go. Click. Okay, so you'll recognize this because this is the Prescott Strategic Plan, where you're really looking to be a premier community of Southwest. And the mission is to, although enjoy the past, but also look and catalyze the future. And what I'd say is that this is one of the premier ways to be able to, supposed to go back, is to create new, high-quality, high-paying jobs to support that vision and mission of catalyzing the future. Incubating, accelerating, and attracting high-tech companies, which expands our economic development and allows us to have more than just the big-box retailers as our top 10, but to have that other category, which was also about 35 million, grow that other category to 70 million, 100 million, 200 million, and complement Prescott North and all of the Prescott Growth Initiatives through these conservative but leveraged investments, which will make a difference, and your vision today will make a difference for the future. Thanks.
Hey, Michael?
Yeah, Jim.
Just real fast. I think this is really important.
Jim, you got to get to the mic, please.
Okay, I'm going. I, I think this is really important. John Haas and I had a call with Andy Lombard of the Arizona Commerce Authority. He's the EVP of Innovation and Venture Development. We had a call, on that call was Randy Gustafson, who is the VP of Innovation. We, I've known Andy for, for years, and his programs that he's put on for Sandra Watson and the governor have created literally hundreds of millions of dollars in venture and new businesses. The bottom line is, when John and I got off the phone with him, he offered to be on the Board of Directors of our Center for the Future. He also, I think from a foundational standpoint, as we look at our new Hilton Garden Hotel, we look at our new Sam Hill Convention Center, as well as our other hotels, has offered to put on what's called Venture Ready, which is what they do in the valley. We will have one in the spring and one in the fall. The, the key to this is, is that we're tying our business tourism, tourism with the, with business attraction, with organic growth of kids like the Catalyst Kids. So all of those pieces actually tie together for our future growth. And like I said, it was probably the best call I've had with the Commerce Authority in 20 years, and I've been here doing this a long time. So it was, it was pretty exciting for validation to the center. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
And to a little bit dovetail on what Jim's talking about and talk about it a little broader, I, I want you to realize that staff has thought about the synergies associated with all these projects, because there are a ton of them. Tyler, do you want to bring up that? Because what we're playing forward transcends downtown and transcends the airport region. A good example is what Jim just alluded to, is the Innovation Challenge and Venture Ready events. They're going to be housed at the Hilton Garden Inn. And we can highlight what we're doing with the Granite Creek Corridor improvements to the attendees, while also showing the attendees our marketing and business tourism and relocation information. So if you have the business and economic development marketing piece, you're using what you've just created in downtown to highlight where we're going and where we are. And I think those types of synergies are really valuable. Another one that goes to the marketing and advertising piece, and I know, I talked to Councilwoman Scholl earlier, she said, you know, Michael, one of the concerns I have is I don't want to go it alone. Well, I had the idea, and I think it makes a lot of sense. When we have a marketing and advertising piece, I think it should be given to Barry Aaron's. And Barry and the mayor could go and lobby the state and the federal government with a tangible piece that highlights CP Tech and the Center for Excellence and the new terminal about why more state and federal investment should be made in Prescott to make this a reality. I think Barry'd be great at that, and he was really excited about the prospect. A third one is, you know, you talk a lot about the Prescott North Master Plan. Well, one side benefit that I don't even have on here is that part of the reason State Land Trust is willing to start working on things for us is they see us putting together a comprehensive development plan that puts them at the table. Well, that's a side benefit that none of us really thought about when we thought about this master planning concept, but because they're going to be part of the dialogue along with the development community, they're going to help release some of the things they're holding up. Another good way I, I see that is the aviation CEO, Omer, and Mike McCormick, the CP Technologies, they're committed to promoting Prescott to their supply chain, to speak up to why I'm here. Here's documentation showing why I came here. Here's my testimony, for lack of a better term, of why I made this decision. We can take that product and give it to Omer Supply Chain and CP Tech Supply Chain. So all of these things, I hope you realize are interrelated, from the master planning concepts, to the marketing and advertising, to the creation and construction of the Center for the Future. And I know a lot of people have a lot of ideas, and there are some tremendous ideas in this community, but we are really trying to leverage this $5 million to the best of our ability. And I hope you guys can understand and appreciate that. Is that it, Tyler?
And then the motions and the details?
Oh, and so then I, I thought about, well, what, what could I kind of get you guys to understand what would be good to get the ball rolling? Because I understand, I'm not expecting you to say, stroke us a check for $3.7 million, because that's not realistic, nor is it good government. So then I thought about, well, what, what could I kind of get you guys to understand what would be good to get the ball rolling? Because I understand, I'm not expecting you to say, stroke us a check for $3.7 million, because that's not realistic, nor is it good government. The first thing I'd like you to do is, could you consider the approval of the $60,000 for business tourism, attraction, advertising, and marketing campaign? That would be one thing that I would strongly consider you consider passing a motion or considering a motion on. Also, pass a motion to allow staff to seek the professional planning expertise we're going to need for Prescott North and the Granite Creek area. And then we would bring a recommendation on the firm and the amount of money back to council. So I'm not asking for money on that now, I'm just asking you to say, go forth and do good things with that. Number three, Tyler really needs the commitment to apply the approval for Phase One of the Granite Creek Corridor, $438,000 and change, so he could go seek the 50-50 grant. Tyler, did I get all that right?
Yeah, that's correct. It would be the Land and Water Conservation Fund for this.
And for the Center for the Future, I would really be able to get to the, hit the ground running. If you could set aside or give me the discretion to, of 2.5% of the total project cost, so I could do the startup and establishment costs, like the legal fees, and figuring out the best way or what the best plan is, the business plan, and come up with information for potential tenants that are seeking lease opportunities now. I need to go out and figure out how to do that. And then, once we got that established, I would come back to you guys with a business plan, a reimbursement plan, and a proof of occupancy of 75% before you released another dime.
So are you suggesting, Michael, that instead of what we're seeing from motions here, this is-
This is the way you go.
Okay. Anything else in your-
No. And I'm sorry for that, but the more I thought about it, I feel like this could conceivably give you more comfort that we're going to continue to work towards these things, but not open the checkbook.
Baby steps, yeah. Good. Okay. Thank you, guys. Good, good presentation. Councilmember Rusin.
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Woodfield. I don't have your previous budget presentation before me at the moment, but I remember that our contingency fee earlier, I mean, contingency fund, earlier in the year was about $4 million, and that the CARES money, the $5 million, would bring it up to $9 million. So it would go from 2% to 4%.
Yeah, I can bring that up. Let me pull that up. So we had $5,100,000 in the contingency to begin with. We added the AZ, the money freed up in the general fund by the AZ CARES reimbursement of $5,085,000. So it ended up being about $10 million point, $10,200,000.
So then, does that money stay there, and then we're going to take $5 million out of the general fund, or is that the $5 million?
That's out of the general fund. These are not, this is the budget as a whole.
So that the actual contingency fund will be-
There isn't a contingency fund. There's contingencies throughout the budget. Yeah, there's contingencies throughout the budget of $10 million. It's in different funds, it's in different areas. The $5,085,000 for the AZ CARES, which is the result of the available fund balance from that reimbursement, is in the general fund and the non-departmental line item to be used.
So these are, thank you for that clarification. So just to be clear, this is money that we're going to be allocating from the general fund?
The, yes, it's surplus general fund balance.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think the public at large is really confused on exactly what these funds are and what their intentions were. A lot of them thought that these allocations would become directly out of the CARES Act funding, and that's really not the case. Because we have public safety, both Prescott Fire Department and Prescott Police Department, other staffing allocations that we've had to apply to some of the public safety issues that have occurred since the funding here identified that period of time that we, as a community, had to commit that, that, those services for. And this CARE Act funds reimburses that budgeted amount for these services. And consequently, now we have additional funding in our general fund to be able to look at programs that we've discussed over the last years on how we would use that general fund monies to support economic development, marketing, all kinds of things that these proposals and projects kind of fit into the same category. So now that we can clarify that, because I know a lot of people are saying, how come we're spending these coronavirus aid and relief funds for, you know, a marketing campaign or the Granite Creek Corridor revitalization? It's really not that. So now we have a broader amount of general fund, funds to be able to be used for some of the things that we've deliberated and debated and wanted to fund. And now we have the ability to do that. My only primary concern is in the Center for the Future to make sure that these tax, general fund tax dollars are going to be able to support the creation of this center, be able to attract the great high-tech businesses, connect the great graduates from Embry-Riddle, the graduates from Yavapai College, the technical skills from C-Tech and some of the others, all together into really an integrated package that we're already seeing some of these terrific companies, startups, and not, not just startups, but even satellites and well-established companies that want to be here. So as long as, as you were describing, we have the ability to put together a structure that we can know that these tax dollars are being secured, and we will be able to get a return on these, whether it's just a one-to-one payback, or even potentially an actual return on investment above what we invest, then I can feel comfortable in being able to support that. So we have a couple of steps to go, but I think this is a clear and distinct intention to our Center for the Future and the people that are working on this, and the people that are coming to them saying, we want to be a part of this, that this is not just an idea, this is a financial commitment, as long as we know that the final structures, the contracts, the leases, whatever they are, will protect our tax dollars and make sure that they're not lost.
I appreciate your comments, Councilman Good. And I would like you to be as involved as you'd like to be in this process, and I think us getting $92,500 in startup and movement will allow us to show the momentum and carry it through, but also protect the lion's share of the taxpayers' money as we get the rest of this squared away.
I think that'll be appropriate. Thank you, Michael.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, I think, I think what I'm saying is similar to what Councilman Good said, is that I, I like the idea, Michael, of what you're saying with the baby steps that Mayor referred to. But I want to make sure that these funds are secured, that, that we're not going to let anything happen to those funds, so that we can, in fact, do the Center for the Future, we can, in fact, do this master plan up north, and so those, those funds will not be touched.
Otherwise.
Otherwise. And so, so I'm, I'm all in on this. I think it's excellent use of money, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Scholl?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, definitely a lot of public confusion about what's happening with these CARES Act funds. I, I'm definitely much more comfortable with the amended motions. I think, you know, that $3.7 million price tag is a little scary when you just are like allocating that with no indication of what's going to lead up to that. I think these are all very worthy projects. I'm glad to see that there's kind of a variety of projects focused on different areas of town with, you know, different, while they're, they're connected and will cross over a lot, I like that we're not just dumping all of it into one particular project. So I think this is a great plan. I like that there's some accountability and some decisions that will be, will be part of down the road, and I'm very comfortable with this.
Thank you, Council.
Councilwoman Siski?
Thanks, Mayor. You know, I mentioned this on the radio this morning, and there's an old adage, you know, you, you give somebody a fish, you feed them for a day. You invest in the future by teaching them how to fish and going into the future with the Center for the Future, you're going to feed them for a lifetime. And so that's what we're going to do to this area. We're going to feed it for a lifetime.
Councilmember Rusin?
Thank you. I am much more comfortable with this amended plan, the baby steps. I support investing our tax dollars, plowing them back into our community for future, the future benefit of this, keeping this community vibrant. So thank you very much for the clarification here.
Thank you, Councilmember Rusin.
Michael, this is a great plan. I wholeheartedly support it. I think we will look back on this day and realize what a tremendous gift we gave to our city that will create jobs for decades to come. This is very good work, particularly, you know, like Councilwoman Scholl was saying, to have the variety and the diversity is tremendous. I will say, though, around the airport with the Center for the Future, that that is going to be a real focal point for us, and it's really going to pay off big dividends well into the future. So we're going to look back on this day and be very proud of what we did. Any public comment?
We do have a few comments that I received earlier today through the portal, and then I do see, MJ, that your hand is raised in the Zoom meeting, so I'll read through the comments, Mayor, if you'd like, and then we can take raised hands in the Zoom call.
Yeah, please do.
Okay, great. The first comment was submitted by Brenda Brown. Dear councilmembers, representatives, and city leaders, it was with much displeasure that I have read about your plans for the 5.1 million CARES money that Prescott was awarded. I don't think you were allocating the money with the intended purpose of the grant you received. My understanding is that CARES funds should help offset costs and expenses associated with COVID-19. I would like to review the grant you wrote, presented, and won funding for to see how you propose spending associated funds. Usually there are associated reports them. That must be made, proving how you used the funds. I take issue with using the money for Granite Creek Park revitalization. Granite Creek Park and its surrounding areas have needed revitalization for years, specifically because of the homeless element living there and the dangers associated with frequenting the area at night. I don't believe council has exacerbated the issue. I strongly urge you to consider allocating the 5.1 million CARES Windfall money to areas of the city that have been impacted by COVID. I specifically suggest internet equity for teachers and students who rely on internet service and Wi-Fi hotspots for distance learning. These services could be administered through the city and the library. I urge you to be responsive to your constituents. Thank you for your consideration.
Mayor, may I interrupt for just a second? I spoke with Brenda Brown today on the phone in response to her email, and while I can't speak to everything in her email, we did talk about quite a bit of it. She is much more comfortable now that Michelle has shared the information that we've shared with you today, the clarification from the Treasury and from the governor's office, as well as we talked about the Granite Creek Corridor and the Center for the Future. And so some of those concerns were alleviated, but I can't speak to the rest.
Thank you, Tyler. Our next comment is from Ralph Hess. Good afternoon. As we are all aware, local residents and businesses have experienced economic losses incident to COVID-19 restrictions Governor Ducey needed to impose. I do not know how many local residents have become unemployed, how many are facing eviction or foreclosure because of an inability to pay rent or mortgages, or how many are unable to provide for their basic needs. Perhaps you have that data available to you. You are considering distributing the vast bulk of the city's CARES Act relief funds, $3.7 million for the proposed Center for the Future, which appears to be a private enterprise better suited as a Chamber of Commerce project or an Embry-Riddle aeronautical university alumni outreach project. Moreover, several questions come to mind. I posed two of them. Would the proposed distribution of funds for the Center for the Future violate a gift clause of the Arizona State Constitution? Does Article 6, Section 16 of the City of Prescott Charter require prior voter approval for the proposed transfer of these assets? The minutes for your July 28 study session indicate that Dr. Haas cited a similar model in Durango, Colorado, whose success is reported in the minutes as having created 122 jobs over seven years. Aside the expenditure of public funds issue, is that an example of a good return? Your council is supposed to represent more than the developers and business interests of this community. Please consider directing CARES Act funds to establishing a Prescott Housing Authority, which has been discussed for years. Even Congressman Gosar is touting the use of such funds to ease the pain of our community members facing housing challenges, when he wrote, quote, "This CARES Act money needs, is necessary to help our local housing authorities cope with increased demand caused by the shutdown," end quote. Now that is planning for the future well-being of this community. That's all I've received from the-
John, why don't you go ahead quickly before you go on?
Okay, so, first of all, the state, there's a state statute that, that authorizes the city to basically invest in economic development activities primarily for the creation of jobs or the retention of jobs. Cities are discouraged from doing retail tax rebates, which was a real tool we used about 10 years ago or more, but the, the expenditure for the, for the Center for the Future is, falls squarely within that statute in terms of expenditures for economic development activity as the statute defines. The, the, there is, it kind of addressed a couple of issues. There is that continued moratorium on residential evictions that, that the governor extended, I think, through the fall. So really not an issue at this point in time. And then as far as the, the charter reference, which he made, which Mr. Hess made here and, and at the, during the study session, that charter, the charter reference that he refers to is, is the Prop 401, which talks about a $40 million expenditures. So, so neither the, I'll address the prior one, neither the state trust land acquisition reaches, is anywhere near $40 million, and this is, you know, maybe $3 million in expenditure. So neither trigger the, the charter, the Article 6, Section 16. I'm not sure why that question was asked, but it's not even close. So the, these are perfectly legal options, and again, I think we need to continue to stress when questions come up, this is not CARES money. It's not even AZ CARES money, which is, we're a subrecipient of federal money through the state. This is general fund money, and the Finance Department and HR can document the expenditure of the $5,85,116 expenditure for fire, police, and dispatch for that quarter. So we are very safe and comfortable with the use of this money, again, in, in small part today, if, if you go with these, these motions, these sort of amended motions that the city manager is recommending, and going into the future, as, as if the council decides to expend more of that $5 million, it's very safely, squarely within the state statute.
John, to go a step further, after our initial presentation from Mr. Lamar, I sent the presentation to the governor's office. And, and in that regard, mostly it was to show the governor what we're doing with the money. It wasn't really, I wasn't asking legally, but there's no response in that regard either. I mean, you know, I, I'm certain the governor is excited about it.
You know, again, we look at the state statute for guidance on, on expenditures for economic development, and all this stuff is, is that, because it's going to be, it's going to create and retain jobs. because it's going to be, it's going to create and retain jobs. And then the governor's own guidance says, you know, frees up money to deploy elsewhere. Well, this is precisely what the governor's intent is when you read just the force, you know, within the four quarters of the document. There's not a whole lot of question about that. So we're very comfortable that going forward, again, with these small expenditures or direction today, and if the council decides to, you know, do the full expenditures at some point down the future, when these, when these triggers hit, then I think, I think we're very comfortable legally that this is doable and allowable.
Thanks, John. Any other public comment from Zoom?
Yes, I do have MJ Smith in the Zoom call. And MJ, you can go ahead and unmute yourself now.
Thank you. I appreciate the time to, to talk with you today. Again, my name is MJ Smith. I am the Director of the Prescott Downtown Partnership. The projects recommended in City Manager Michael Lamar's proposal are valuable, growth encouraging projects. PDP sits on the Prescott Steering Committee and was at the table when Ron Drake presented his study outlining long-term goals for Prescott. In a normal year, Prescott Downtown Partnership would wholeheartedly support funding these efforts. But in 2020, the year of COVID, discussing the allocation of funding for future growth turns a blind eye to the very real fight for survival our small businesses are in. While some of PDP's membership has reported record revenue generating quarters, others have experienced catastrophic business interruption and forced closures. We can all agree the extended closures of Series Six and Seven license holders and gyms have strangled the roughly 40 Prescott businesses who fell under Executive Order 2020-43 restrictions. The idea that 7,000 businesses have been equally affected is preposterous. But how do we discuss future economic potential when iconic Whiskey Row establishments are facing the very real threat of closure? Series Six and Seven liquor license holders have been shuttered for nearly five months. They were forced to close their doors to mitigate COVID-19 transmission and followed the order as responsible community members, resulting in zero revenue for five months during their busiest season of the year. For many, the inability to open for Independence Day alone meant a 10% reduction in their 2020 revenue potential. These businesses have been prevented from operating, but they have still been required to cover their expenses. They've lost inventory and continue to pay utilities and rent in hopes of reopening. We have an opportunity with these dollars to prop up our merchants and give them time to reopen, time to begin generating revenue. While it is a cumbersome prospect to navigate a grant program, Marysville, Washington recently supported 55 local businesses with similar dollars by offering rent relief grants to businesses with a documented substantial loss of revenue. Qualified businesses were eligible for up to three months of rent relief. In conversation with our local merchants, a reprieve of two months' rent will mean the difference between permanently shuttering and plausible reopening. Diverting just $400,000 from the $5.7 million under discussion today to small business grants for the 40 or so businesses who have been disproportionately affected will allow Whiskey Row's iconic bars to keep their doors open and weather this crisis. It will allow local gyms to stay afloat. Permanent closures of our downtown nightlife will have ripple effects throughout the downtown business community. Councilman Shishka said earlier that those small businesses who do not weather this crisis will be replaced by others. But I want to remind you that the established businesses we are talking about today rallied behind our wildland firefighter families and raised $202,000 in one 10-hour day for the 19. They raised $87,000 following the Whiskey Row fire, and they raise in excess of $30,000 each year for the courthouse lighting. I find it hard to believe that we cannot navigate a grant system that rallies behind them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, MJ. That is the last of the public comments that I have on the Zoom call.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I've had, as you have, several conversations with Senator Phan. She's been working very hard for the bars and trying to get more local control here in Yavapai County, and some was given because of our positivity rate being pretty low. We're one of two, La Paz County and then Yavapai County. However, our bars are still having an issue of being closed by the governor. I will tell you that she is working hard to release what she can, and she's reminded me today even that she's trying to get money for the bars. So MJ, I guess I would say to you, you know, we all feel that because we're all trying to do what we can to support our bars that are not allowed to open right now. However, there have been a lot of programs out there, and I just want to go through a couple of them. I'm just sitting here, written down. The idle loan that came out very early on, and then the Paycheck Protection Program, which is a forgivable loan that goes to our businesses. There was also money for the schools. And then eviction, which you mentioned, John, eviction protection that the governor put in. So there have been a lot of efforts out there. Unfortunately, it's, I keep saying, you know, Whiskey Row without whiskey is not good for our bars. And so we're going to continue, I want you to know, MJ, we are continuing to do everything we can to get these bars open as fast as we can or to get them some sort of supplemental income, if nothing else, for rent. And so I understand what you're saying. And however, I think it goes back to what John was saying with regard to the gift clause, and then how do you administer a grant program? So I just, you know, we're all feeling that pain of what's going on with our bars. And the mayor and I have talked a lot about it, and we will keep working with Senator Phan, Andy Tobin, everybody that will listen to do what we can to help the bars.
Mayor, just to dovetail on what Mayor Protem talked about, did you want to talk about your town hall Friday, too? Just in terms of the specific questions?
Well, yeah. So regarding opening, I guess, and this is kind of a little off topic, but.
He's good with it.
Okay, John approves. Well, on Monday, there were new guidelines that came out for us, specifically bars, gyms, and theaters, I think, were the main ones that would affect the city of Prescott. And, you know, it can be a little confusing navigating all those guidelines, trying to figure out what it means. So we're going to do a town hall, a virtual town hall on Friday at 10:00 a.m., and we're going to have Leslie Horton with us. We've invited the Governor's Office. But we want to get as much expertise around this, particularly from Leslie, to interpret for our bars and gyms what it really means for them. I do believe that with gyms, I spoke with Damon Olson, who runs YMCA. I do believe gyms can open, and it looks like the YMCA will be opening with 25% capacity. I think he was thinking about like Monday or something next week. So we'll do that town hall, that virtual town hall, to help bring clarity around these guidelines. Mayor Protem brings a good point. There's, I think, over $400 million that the governor's still sitting on of CARES money. And if he wants to administer something to the bars, I have petitioned the Governor's Office several times to help out our bars here locally or to allow us to have local control to open those bars and monitor those openings. At this point, you know, we're still radio silence on that from the Governor's Office. But it's nice to see that gyms can open here fairly soon. With that, if there's no more public comment, we have these proposed, printed, proposed motions here, which would supersede everything that's in the agenda.
Yes, that's correct, Mayor.
Thanks for that, Michael.
So I'd look for a motion.
Always looking out for Sarah Seibert.
Yes. I would entertain these separate motions at this time.
So these are each, we vote on each one?
So there's four here, right? The last one's not a motion.
Okay, well, I'll start, and then we can go around. Approve $60,000 for business tourism and attraction advertising marketing campaign.
Second.
We have a motion and second, please vote.
Pass the 7-0.
Okay, entertain another one.
Mayor, I move to allow staff to seek professional planning proposals for Prescott North and Granite Creek area. A recommendation we brought back to council.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, please vote.
Pass the 7-0.
Mayor, I move to approve staff to apply for a Granite Creek Corridor grant funding up to $438,785.75 for Phase One. If successful approval to accept funds will be sought.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Pass the 7-0.
Mayor, I move Center for the Future, approve the allocation of $92,500, 2.5% of total project per startup and establishment cost. Seek lease opportunities for tenants interested in the space now.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Pass the 7-0.
All right. I think that's everything, right? Is that, that last one is not?
That is. He was just bringing in an additional addendum that's not necessary for anything other than, we're going to come back. And thank you for the confidence to proceed with this.
Great job.
I think that concludes Item B.
It seems like we're done. It seems like we should be done by now. You got four more items to go, so.
Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Paladini. Let's go to Item C, please.
Adoption of Ordinance Number 2020-1722, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving a land lease agreement, City Contract Number 2020-212, with Selco Partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless, a Delaware general partnership for communications equipment located on city-owned right-of-way APN 800-11-009K, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptance.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Craig Dotseth, Public Works. So as, as mentioned, this item is to consider land lease agreement between the city and Selco Partnership DBA Varieties and Wireless. This item has previously been here on June 23, at which time a number of concerns and/or questions were brought up on the item. So from, from those questions and concerns, then staff, as well as the applicant, went back to the drawing board. Some of the same items that staff had to conclude then were checking the cul-de-sac and potential implications of adding this equipment to the cul-de-sac, and then if it would impact fire truck turnaround ability. So the fire department has taken a truck up there and confirmed that it is still very capable to service that cul-de-sac turnaround as needed. And on the flip side also was garbage truck questions. And our garbage trucks, full-size truck, services that street every week and is able to and will be able to turn around there in the future, even with this equipment. One of the concerns then was by the single property owner or the single residence at the end of the cul-de-sac there and how it would impact them. So with that, then Reg Destry, that is here also from Verizon, he will have information and be able to answer questions. He went back and looked at their design, and the design included pole in the same location previously as what's being considered today. But previously, the equipment was going to be on the south side of the pole. So here's the residence. The pole location is right over here, in that area. Even more. There we go. So the equipment was proposed down here to the south, which was more in line with the driveway and access to the residence. The pole is up in, where do we go, existing road? It's hard, hard to see what the trees are. The pole is up in this vicinity. So from the current pole and the proposed pole, the pole location is not planned to move. So they went back and and looked at that, and they were able to alter. So the previous view had the equipment down in this vicinity, where here is the pole location as previous and proposed today. That has not changed. But on this view, the equipment has been moved up to the north versus when it was here previously, then it was in alignment with the house driveway. So now it is considerable distance further north above that to eliminate the potential impact of that private property owner to be able to utilize the city right-of-way in front of his house. So Verizon and Reg, they went back and did that. We checked truck turnarounds, everything associated with that. Double-checked the survey. So we confirm that city survey matches the Verizon survey for all, all information that was supplied. And ultimately, this lease agreement then includes the potential for 192 square feet of surface area to be utilized through the lease. The initial term would be 10 years. The initial rate would be $14,000 per year with a 15% compounded rent increase at the beginning of each five-year renewal period. And it also has a initial $10,000 lump sum signing fee at the beginning of it. With, with that, Mayor, if you'd like, we could have Reg come forward and supply additional information and/or answer questions.
Okay. Let's go to questions, comments from the council, and then maybe Mr. Destry can help us if there are some questions for him.
Councilmember Rusin?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I'd like to say that originally this item was on the consent agenda, and the property owner had no idea of what was actually going on with his property, with this pole. So I just want to thank the council for allowing us to make these modifications and allowing city staff to work with the rest of the city staff to make sure that it was safe and the necessary vehicles, fire, and trash could do the turnarounds. I spoke with Mr. Napier, the property owner adjacent, and he, he still had some questions. And I don't know if you've heard from him. He said that he was still worried about his airstream, whether or not he could, he could get back in. Have you heard anything more about that?
I am not aware of any additional communication with the property owner in my office.
Okay. And then there was also the thought, and like I said, I have gotten a lot of emails from people that live in Timber Ridge and on the Copper Basin area about, you know, how poor and spotting their service is. So there's no doubt that we do need something in the area, especially for, you know, the safety of the residents if they don't have cell service. But one of the alternative sites was Sheriff's Posse up there on, off Copper Basin. They haven't heard anything. Is there any reason for that? Has it been ruled out or?
Reg would be able to answer that. As far as us as city staff, that is not our place to go and solicit other sites and, you know, for the private enterprise. We, we manage the requests that we receive for the right-of-way. So that's been our involvement there.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Rusin, my name is, sorry, I tried to keep it on. My name is Reg Destry. I work with Verizon Wireless. And before I answer your question, I'd just like to say one thing. Thank you. This site is better than it was with revising this layout. And we spoke with Mr. Napier on site. I know staff spoke with him on site. And initially, when we designed the site, this area to the north of the pole actually was scrub brush. And Mr. Napier, since he's owned the parcel next door, which kind of surrounds us, actually cleaned this up a bit, opened it up, and it is now, it was more obvious when we met with him out there that that location would work. And so we were able to revise the layout. The pole itself is still in the same location that it was proposed previously. If Mr. Napier has indicated that he's concerned about his airstream, what I could point out is that there is a bollard that is currently there just to the north of the pole. And that bollard is actually going to remain in the same place. I can, if I can. I can, if I can, well, I guess I could probably come over there and show it. Yeah, that's it right there. So that bollard is actually going to stay right there. And just to give you an idea, it's to the right of that where the airstream would get backed in or turned around to get over onto Mr. Rusing's property, so.
Parked on city right-of-way, isn't it?
His airstream, I don't believe it, it is, part of it is on there. It's a weird situation.
He's parked on city right-of-way. When I went up there and looked at it.
Okay.
Because he had it, when I looked at it, it was right next to his garage, right?
Yeah, on city right-of-way.
And that's the city right-of-way. Okay.
Yeah. And I apologize. Back to your question regarding the Sheriff's Posse. That location, so when, when we were denied for the site at the Zone 19 tank several years ago, I think it was three and a half years ago now, we started to look at what other options might exist out there, and that was actually a suggested option. At the time, I did contact the Sheriff's Posse. I don't recall if it was Councilman Blair may have given me a contact number over there.
And they said they never heard from you.
Okay, and so I did call him. I actually set up a meeting, and again, this is three and a half years ago, to take a look. I walked on the site. The site was actually a good site, a reasonable site to, to build a, a structure. Likely would have offered some coverage for Timber Ridge. The problem we ran into is that that site is located in Yavapai County. And so the Yavapai County ordinance requires that any site on rural or residential land that's within 1,000 feet of any residences would require a use permit. It would not be allowed by right. And that type of site in that location would almost certainly be denied if there are other options that are less intrusive, whether they be within Yavapai County's jurisdiction or within Prescott's jurisdiction. So one of the things I would have to demonstrate there, if we were to go through that process, would be that there are not other more viable options that are less intrusive and have a lower impact on surrounding neighborhoods.
Isn't Sheriff's Posse like 10 acres or something?
It is, that's correct. It's, it's three separate parcels that, when split up, hit that. But I measured, it's about 500 feet to the nearest homes. And so there's, there's no way to meet that 1,000 feet. And I've, I've had the misfortune, in fact, of being denied several times for use permits in residential areas within the county. That really, the, the fact that there was an option here other than that really drove us to kind of look around at some other things, doing something small. So one of the gentlemen that lives on the hill to the south of the Zone 19 tank, Mr. Forkum, he lives way up at the top of the hill. He actually contacted me, hey, would you want to do a really short pole on my property to look out over the valley? And he said, all right, we'll look at it. I gave it to the engineer. It didn't work well for the engineer because it was shooting from south to north, and it would cover this area, but it would provide signal that would be just a tiny bit of signal throughout all of Prescott because it sees all of Prescott. So it causes interference with other sites and with other phones. That really got us to thinking again, well, what about doing the smallest possible thing up on a hill? And so we started to look at the hills. We're already on the Indian Hills tank, and, well, the pole's next to the Indian Hills tank. But this particular site had an existing communications pole at it, has the use that's been ongoing. So it offered us the opportunity to do what is considered sort of ideal in most cases, and that is co-locate and replace an existing structure. Typically, a, a site, you know, if we were to do something at the Sheriff's Posse, it would end up being probably a 70 to 100-foot tall structure, whether it be a tree or a standalone tower, a lattice tower. And it would be a much larger form factor. And as you likely remember, there were issues with the site at Zone 19. There were zoning issues, there were leasing issues, but folks were concerned about, I don't want that 300, 500 feet from my home. And so that's why a lot of ordinances are written toward go with the smallest thing possible. This particular design is really the minimum that we could do to provide coverage in Timber Ridge and some of the areas a little bit west and north of Copper Basin as well. So it, there's a very compelling reason why, three and a half years ago and still today, we, we are not going with that Sheriff's Posse location.
Thank you. And also, I've gotten feedback from the people in Hidden Valley Ranch off of White Spar. They got spotty, they have spotty service, and we have a water tank on a hill there that might be, have you made any movements on that? I know this is a different topic.
It is, Mayor, and, and, you know, if we're not talking about alternate sites that would substitute for this one, and I'm not exactly sure, I don't think, I don't think the site just mentioned is going to be a substitute for this site. So we probably should just focus on this lease deal.
Yep. Okay. Let's go to Councilman Good.
Reg, thank you for being cooperative and working with the property owner. I think this project now really solves almost all of my concerns, and it's certainly overwhelmingly supported by the community in Timber Ridge, which has had really inconsistent service up there for a long, long time. So I was on planning and zoning when you looked at that other situation there, and there were some deed restriction problems and things like that. So this certainly solves the problem. I think the homeowner now and the property owner are relatively satisfied, so I thank you for kind of going above and beyond and making this work. So I support this.
Councilman Siski?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank the residents of Timber Ridge for being so proactive and taking your future in your hands. And so it's going to be great to drive up in that area and actually have a cell signal. So thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I just checked with Michelle Rush, our assistant, and we had over 64 responses. People saying, let's get this done. So what's the timeline, Reg, that we could add? We're talking adding 10 feet, right?
It would, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, it would require replacing the pole. So yeah, it will be about 10 feet taller. The site is currently scheduled on next year's build plan. It is not on this year's build plan. We have to order all of the materials and get it scheduled. I believe the building permit needs a minor revision since we did move the equipment, but we had already gotten to the point where the building permit, the drawings had been approved, and we're ready to get pulled. So once we have this, we should be able to get the internal approvals to move forward and set it on the construction schedule. But again, it will not be this year.
Well, the sooner you can get it done, I think, the better for Timber Ridge.
Absolutely. They've been asking for five years for, for coverage.
Great job. Appreciate you being here and your work on this and your persistence. Public comment?
I don't have anybody in the Zoom call raising their hand as of now. I do have one comment that was received from Dan Byer. My name is Dan Byer, and I'm a resident of Timber Ridge. As the president of the Timber Ridge HOA, I'm asking the city council to approve the proposal to install a new cell tower that will greatly improve the cell phone service in Timber Ridge. With over 350 homes in our subdivision, it is vital that we have quality service for our residents. It is also vital in case of a situation where the fire protection services need to stage in our area and can do the best communications available for their needs. And that is all I have.
Okay, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 2020-1722.
Second?
Have a motion and second. Let's vote, please.
Passes 7-0.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Reg. We only have three more, is that right?
Correct. Approval of city contract number 2020-171A1, an amendment to city contract number 2020-171.
Hello again, Mayor, Council. So this item is in relationship to the landscaping at Deepwell Ranch Road and a proposed amendment with our current contract that, that we have with Sun State's Development on replacing the Willow Creek Curve. So as I believe you all are aware, that's under construction right now. So this would amend that contract to allow us to work with Sun States for them to build all of the landscape improvements within the Deepwell Ranch roundabout. And then ultimately, there would be the gracious reimbursement through the Harold James Trust to reimburse the city for those costs, as we have identified in our memo here, up to $125,000. So, and it was mentioned earlier. So the, the landscaping, oh, come on. There we go. The landscaping will be in conjunction with the, the most recent bronze that was placed there on Sunday morning. So as Mayor Protem mentioned earlier, it's amazing structure. So here is when it showed up on the trailer, actually in two pieces. So the horse that goes on the top is, is down there separate. And then when they're setting it into place. So then the landscaping design being considered. Will you supplement? Statue, which has been placed in, in the center of the roundabout. So here is where the statue is at. They have accent walls that are planned. That's what these are right in here and around here. So accent walls, and then the landscape plants. All of plants being considered meet our drought tolerant list or are on drought tolerant list. The accent walls are designed to match like the deep well windmill entrance monuments with the protruding joint concrete and that same following along with that theme. So when it's complete, it will be an amazing, amazing sight. So again, it's a matter of the city then to manage this through our contract with Sun State's Development to get the landscaping and complete, and then the Harold James Family Trust to provide the donation to reimburse the city for these costs. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thanks, Greg. Mayor Protem?
I just want to say again, we talked about it during the announcements, but this is a wonderful, a wonderful welcome to the city as people come in from the airport and, you know, as they go about their way throughout that whole area. Just a great gift to the city. I want to thank the Harold James Family Trust. And Mayor, if it's okay, I'd like to make a motion of...
Hang on one second. Councilman Troll?
Thanks. This is going to be a weird question, but, so when there are like car accidents around roundabouts, like that time that guy drove over the roundabout down Prescott Lakes Parkway, are, are we ever reimbursed by like insurance or anything? Like for the damage incurred?
Yes, and maybe John wants to speak to that a little?
If, if there were damage to a roundabout or statue, we have insurance on these. We actually specifically list out these statues because they are so valuable with the risk pool to specifically insure those. We have our own insurance for those. But then, and so then our insurer would go after the car, the driver's insurance to pay, called the subrogation claim, to reimburse. So we, we would actually, our insurance company covers it for ourselves, and then we go after the driver, assuming they have insurance and enough of it.
Thanks. I know that's kind of weird, but I was just kind of curious.
That's good. Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Mayor Protem?
I'd love to, and Mayor, this, and Alexa, this is basically amount of $375,000 being donated between the monument and the landscaping. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve city contract number 2020-171A1.
Second? Have a motion and second. Let's please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, item E, please.
Approval of final plat for the Granite Delta Estates Phase 3A, creating 90 single-family lots.
Thank you, Mayor. In spite of my reputation, I'm going to make this very fast. This is a proposal for final plat. Preliminary plat for the area of Granite Delta Estates included up to 695 remaining lots. This final plat will take 90 of those lots to that final plat stage. And there have been very minor changes to the final plat from the original preliminary plat. So staff has determined and recommends to you to determine that this is a substantial conformance and to approve the final plat. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Very good. Thank you, George. Questions, comments from the council? Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. George, I know I looked closely at this revised section of Phase 3A. The last time it came forward, about a year ago, I think. And at that time, it was pretty clear that you've got one entrance and one exit, and all these homes will have to be sprinkled, correct?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Now, I noticed in the little map we have here, we got a little, what looks like maybe a trail or something that might be utilized as, in the future, as a exit route?
It's an emergency egress easement for that very purpose. That provides fire department an additional access into the property should there be an emergency, but does not provide public access.
All right, so how, how viable is that as a second exit at this point, once we approve this? Is that just to be possible in the future, or what?
It would be possible by the time construction starts within the subdivision for that easement to be functional. So it's something that will happen between now and the time that construction on individual homes start.
So does that qualify them for not having to sprinkler the homes?
No, sir. They'll still have to sprinkler all the homes. Because of the primary access being one single access.
Once, one in, one out. All right, well, my, my concerns remain, and I voted against it last year, and I'll vote it against, against it again. I don't think it's safe.
Councilmember Rusing?
Yes, I have a question now. All these streets are public streets, correct?
That's correct.
So the city 1% sales tax is going to be going to the future maintenance of these streets?
That is correct, yes.
Thanks to the Prescott City taxpayers in perpetuity. And then my other question is about the water main. Is it planned to be ductile iron? Or is it going to be the cheaper plastic PVC pipe, which breaks after about 20 years?
That will come with the actual construction plans for that. They are subject to the same standards as all other subdivisions, so the GES standards would apply.
Have the other phases been plastic PVC?
An alteration modification has been submitted for this subdivision requesting to use PVC. Under the methods and review process that we have been doing due to the, the soil conditions in this area, not being hard rock and such that we have many other areas of our community, they have been approved under that premise through our alt-modification process that's currently outlined in our GESs.
So, so pretty much no one's, everyone's getting a variance and allowing to use PVC?
No, not, not everyone, only in, each one is reviewed individually, and the conditions of the site are reviewed. That is, that's our current policy until we, you know, review and consider something different if we all choose to do in the GESs.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertained a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the final plat of Granite Delta Estates Phase 3A.
Second? Have a motion and second. Let's please vote.
Passes 5-0, or, I'm sorry, 5-2.
All right, item F, please.
Approval of CSP 20-001, an amendment to comprehensive sign plan for Touchmark at the ranch.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to add two additional signs to the already existing sign package that Touchmark has and received approval from council. The two additional signs include one in the parking lot, one on the side of the building that was visible to traffic coming up off of 69 and into the subdivision, into the area, and one is a relocation of a sign that, that identifies the fitness center, which is located in the same building as the Finn Restaurant. This went to the Planning Commission for their review. At Planning Commission's last meeting, we received a unanimous recommendation in favor, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, comments from the council? Public comment? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman, uh, Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. So it was unanimous at PNC to approve it?
It was, sir, yes.
It's pretty innocuous, my, my estimation. Thanks.
Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertained a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve CSP 20-001, amending the comprehensive sign plan for Touchmark at the ranch.
We have a motion and second. Let's please vote.
Councilmember Rusing, can you please vote? Passes 7-0.
Mayor, will you indulge me for one moment, just one moment? As per Jim Robb...
Mayor, will you indulge me for one moment, just one moment? As per Jim Robb, I wanted to make sure, and I can't fathom you wouldn't all be comfortable, but as he puts correspondence together to leverage the Senator for the Future and money, that we, it's safe to say we are setting aside 3.7 million for this purpose at this point.
That was stated in the meeting earlier.
Okay, I just wanted, he wanted to make sure.
Yeah, it was definitely stated in the meeting earlier, and it will be reflected in the minutes. The quote comes from Mother Teresa, "If we have no peace, it is because we've forgotten that we belong to each other." This meeting is adjourned.
Amen.